Let's do this. Opening the meeting. Everybody, welcome. Before we get to public comment, there is a couple of things I'd like to say. One, last Saturday, you know, we had, and a lot of you know, we had our fishing derby, and it was very, very successful, I have to say. I think it was just fantastic, which it always is, but for the first time, if I remember right, Larry, they said that for the first time, all the tagged fish were caught.
All fifteen.
Made it in your budget.
Fifteen?
Right.
No, it meant, made it in our budget.
Made it in your budget, right, because the tagged fish had a reward with them. So, all the tagged fish were caught, so I want to thank Larry. I want to thank all the volunteers that are on the commission and everybody that worked to make that fishing derby so successful, and it was very successful. And as every year, we thank the Stevens family for giving us access under their property for the fishing derby and letting people tramp up and down the acreage there to and from the river. And thanking the fire department for the barbecue afterwards, where they cooked a few of the fish along with some hot dogs and hamburgers, and it was just a great day. And another great day was at the racetrack, as most of you know. Maybe the racetrack changed hands, let's say, a month ago, the new owners. And they had a big wheel, big wheel truck event. Four thousand five hundred people, not including the children. And there were a lot of children came to the event. The event went very, very well. We did measure the noise output of the trucks. And if I remember right, chief, we had eight incidents where they passed through the ninety-seven dB, but only for two seconds. Is that right?
Eight two-second intervals.
And they were done by four o'clock in the afternoon. So, it went very, very well. It went as good as it could be. The new owners are putting a lot of effort into that track relative to capital improvements and facilities additions and so on, and they have a lot more plans. So, we will continue monitoring the noise, but so far, everything is going very, very well. So, with that, I'll open up for public comment. If you have anything you'd like to address to the board, please, just raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and you have three minutes to say almost anything you want to say. Anybody? All right. Given that, we are going to move on to item three. Todd Selig, Durham Town Administrator, Kitty Marple. Kenny Rotner, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Todd Selig, I'm the administrator in Durham, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Our council chairperson Kitty Marple and Chair Pro Tem Kenny Rotner and I thought that it made good sense to reach out to our neighbors and sort of touch base and see how things were going. And so, last month, we had an opportunity to meet with the Madbury Board of Select Persons, and we're here this evening speaking with you. And then, in the not-too-distant future, we're going to reach out to Newmarket as well and say hello to them. And so, our thought is, we don't do enough talking with one another as communities, and so perhaps if we did, we'll think of things we could do together or ways we could work together for the betterment of all of us. So, I put together a few items from our different departments to talk about some of the ways in which Durham and Lee in particular are working together that I thought might be just generally informative, and then I'd love to hear from all of you as well. So, first, at the Durham Fire Department, we have a new fire chief, David Emanuel, who spent his career with the Durham Fire Department. He went to the University of New Hampshire as well. And he reports that he's been having terrific conversations with your chief, Chief Scott Nemeth, about a whole host of areas. And they include agreeing that this is a great time for Durham, Lee, Newmarket, Madbury to work together in the area of fire service. They're trying to do more with aligning our fire and EMS training efforts, so we're all on the same page and our volunteers are on the same page. They're interested in all of our exploring the possibility of funding a jointly shared training position that can do training in fire and EMS for all of the communities, not only Durham, Lee, Madbury, Newmarket, but perhaps other communities in the area. And I know from the Durham Fire Department's point of view, they've been very interested in trying to bolster training efforts. And then, we've also, at the fire department, tried to do more aligning our response efforts during actual emergencies and doing more to include mutual aid. So, if there's a call to a fire or a serious accident, or if there's some kind of a very intensive scene which requires a lot of personnel, that we have a good way to bring in ancillary support from the other communities to help. And I've told as well that there's already some great collaboration going on in terms of response to the school district buildings, and there's some active conversation about how to respond to nursing homes and populations where there are a lot of elderly people living. So, that's the fire department. At the Durham Police Department, our police reported just an outstanding working relationship with the Lee Police Department and Chief Jonesfalt, so thank you very much. They mentioned that the Lee Police Department helps out with all sorts of special details and events in Durham, the UNH graduation, homecoming, school opening and closing, and then, most recently, UNH Unity Day, which prior to that was Cinco de Mayo, which formerly was called just May 5th. So, on that date, we've had great support from the Lee Police Department. And Durham has been called to help Lee with events at the racetrack and other things. In addition, our school resource officer has a green light from the Lee Police Department to pursue any school-related cases that might cross the boundary into Lee, and she just lets the Lee Police Department know what's going on. And again, there's great cooperation there. And Deputy Chief Rainey Kelly in Durham said, "If there's anything Durham can ever do with investigations to help you, just let them know." So, it's very positive. Let's see. In terms of the Parks and Recreation Department, one of the topics that we talked about with the Madbury select people was, we thought it might make sense for our Durham Parks and Recreation Committee to get together with the Madbury Parks and Recreation Committee and then possibly with your committee, just to introduce themselves and talk about how things are going. And I spoke with Rachel Gazowski, who's our Parks and Recreation Director, and I said, "Are there some things you can think about that might be beneficial to the two communities if we work closer together?" And she said, "Well," she thought that maybe there was an opportunity to co-host some functions, and she thought that we in Durham have an annual egg hunt, she thought that Lee did as well. We in Durham have an annual holiday tree, Christmas tree lighting, she thought you did it as well in Lee. Fireworks is another area. So, perhaps rather than each of us doing separate events, we could combine resources and do one that includes everybody. Or if we're going to do separate events, maybe we can coordinate those events so they're not at the same time, so people can perhaps go to both if they have, if they live in Durham and their kids go to school at Massway. So, those were the ideas there. We've had a lot of conversation over the last month or so regarding the Oyster River Youth Association, and I just wanted to report to you that tomorrow morning, I have a meeting scheduled with Ben Jeans, who's the chairperson of the Orway Board of Directors, to try to map out a general process going forward so that the three communities in Orway can really move forward in a positive direction. And a couple of weeks ago, select person Bubby and Administrator Glover and I and some representatives from Madbury, Durham, the school district, had some initial conversations about that, and I think all of them are interested in getting together and trying to look forward in a positive way. At the Public Works Department in Durham, our director Mike Lynch indicates, again, we have a very positive relationship with the road agent here in Lee. Let me see. And the one major public works project that we've been talking about for a few years now is the potential extension of the Durham Lee water system by a new pipe to the Lee traffic circle to bring potable fresh water to the MTPE contaminated property owners out there. So, we're, I think, just in the early stages of beginning to circulate a new memorandum of understanding between Durham and Lee to talk through how that will work over the long term. So, that's a to-be-continued item. And then, lastly, at the Durham Public Library, the library didn't have anything in particular to report, but our director Rose Reaper said that if anyone from Lee has any ideas of how we could better work together, just let her know, let them know. They'd love to work with you. So, that's the conclusion of our report, and I don't know if Kitty or Kenny have anything to add? I don't know, or?
Hi, I'm Kenny Rotner, and thank you for having us. As part of town council, I'm also on our Parks and Rec Committee. And in the last few years, we've really had a robust growth in the Durham Parks and Rec Committee. We have a full-time now director. With our last budget, we approved money, so we now have an assistant for her. And just wanted to point out that in the town of Durham, with our Parks and Rec, when we're involved with schoolchildren, we don't distinguish which community kids are from. We partner with the school, and so there's a lot of children coming from Lee, coming from Madbury, as well as Durham. And we don't, you know, fill it with Durham, and if there's room, then ask Lee. So, it's a very natural kind of synthesis, really, if we're able to explore kind of working together. Likewise, our library. Middle school is right around the corner from our library. Library doesn't ask what town you're from. So, again, a very, very good way for us to work together. So, we wanted to point those out and did want to thank you. One of the big cooperations we have is the solar array that Durham built a few years ago, which is working wonderfully, and it's on Lee land. Want to thank you for agreeing to the, for that family that we have that allows us to do that. It's a great plan. Thank you.
I think one of the nice things about the solar array that we were hoping for is that the schoolchildren in Oyster River would come out and study it, and that's starting to happen, so it's pretty neat, I think. So, I don't know if you have anything to share or things to talk about?
Just a thought in terms of maybe cross-pollinating things that you, your town is doing, our town is doing, and Madbury is doing. So, if we're having events and things like that, like one of them, I know, and it was because the speaker was from Durham, but we had the gentleman come who owns the John Selig House in Durham, came and gave a talk here. And we didn't specifically invite people from Durham, not that they can't come because it's open to the public, but he brought a lot of his friends because they've never heard him, dude that talked about his structure. But I'm just wondering in terms of if each of the three towns are having an event, if maybe the other two towns could maybe, you know, do some promotion or something, or at least, because I know you do the, your e-newsletter.
Yes.
You do one, too. But that might be good because we do share a school system, and if kids want to go to one or another, they're perfectly welcome. So, I don't know if that would be something that maybe Durham might be interested in doing?
No, we absolutely would. And I know one of the churches in Lee has events, and they have let us know, and we've included it in the Durham Friday Updates e-newsletter we put out, so we'd be happy to do that. That's great.
And one of the other things in terms of, you probably don't know it because they're not part of your town, but the Durham Historical Society and the Lee Historical Society have been talking about doing some same similar things in terms of getting together, see if there's any collaboration there, too. So, it's another facet as well.
One of the things we're finding is that, you know, residents are busy, and serving on town committees and commissions doesn't seem to be as popular a thing to do as it did years ago. And so, we're really working to involve people, so if there are ways we can work together and engage people to get involved, that'd be terrific.
The other thing you mentioned early on in terms of the fire department, I know the chief is, our chief has told us that we have an agreement with Barrington, so if there's something in North Lee, there's kind of a mutual thing there, and the same thing we have with Epping. I don't know what if we have one with you guys for like the eastern part of the town. I don't know if that's...
I can ask David Emanuel. I can't recall when. I know we certainly provide mutual aid support to one another.
Yeah, I know. But there's some agreements we have with Epping and Barrington, and I don't know if we have one with you guys, too, so.
I don't know, but we'd be happy to look at that.
And if Dave comes up with any kind of golden, golden solution to finding firefighters, I know that's something that all the towns are struggling with. So, if he finds the silver bullet or the, you know, the magic wand, let us know what it is, because we'd love to know that, too.
Well, on firefighting, I know we just ordered a new fire truck. It's in production. It's a Marion engine, and Madbury also has ordered a Marion engine. So, the Durham chief and the Madbury chief went out to Wisconsin to see them in production. But last year, I believe, Lee bought a new Marion engine. And what Chief Emanuel said is that they think that's really a positive step because we'll have similar equipment and the staff from the departments will be familiar with how to run it, which is good.
I have a question as well. The events going on with active shooting now, is there a coordinated effort between our towns? If there's an active shooter event?
I believe that there is. So, I would look to Chief Jonesfalt. I know that the Durham Police and the school district have worked closely together, and I know that Durham and Lee have worked closely together.
Correct. We, last year, when we held our first active shooter training with our tactical team, county tactical team, any of our mutual aid departments came to the training. So, Barrington, Durham, and Lee all participated in the training. And we do a lot of cross-training. They sent four officers to the domestic violence training we just hosted recently, and I just put out an email that we're hosting a DWI, Family DWI Training in July, put on by the county attorney, and Durham's already given me four names of officers out of the county. So, we do a lot of annies going there in July for a two-day training at Durham PD. So, we do a lot of cross-training.
Well, thank you very much for the visit, for sure. And I agree with you, and I'm sure the other selectmen do, too, that we do need to work closely together. There's a lot of cooperative effort, I think, that, you know, one and one and one can make four. And certainly, we're facing some common problems, not the least of which, in my mind right now, is our solid waste disposal issues that are creeping up on us rapidly. Scott went to an event in, where, Manchester?
Oh, you did, too?
Today. Yeah, except I didn't make it.
I didn't make it either.
Oh, you didn't. So, anyway, from what I understand, it was a good event. But we agree with you, and we appreciate this effort also, realizing that, you know, we're neighbors and we share a lot of, a lot of common ground, and it's nice to work together, realizing we don't always feel the same way about an issue, but in the end, we need to work together to resolve the problem, so.
Thank you very much.
And I can just note as well, yesterday, my family and I went to Fremont to the Renaissance Fair. We went by the Lee Speedway, and we could see all the traffic, and there was a slight delay on the road, but it was not long at all, so it was great coordination to move a lot of cars through there. So, we didn't know what it was, but when you mentioned, I said, "Oh, that's what it was." So, good job.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Todd, could you just update us in terms of the Durham Ambulance Corps? You guys are working with them to find a new facility, and you've made some progress on that, so.
Yeah, so McGregor Memorial is interested in a new facility, and the Durham Fire Department is as well. So, as you know, Durham Fire services both the town of Durham and the University of New Hampshire, and UNH funds half of the cost of the department. So, we've been looking for years for a site, and we believe we have a viable site on Waterworks Road on the UNH campus. And there's, we've done some preliminary engineering and architectural design for a combined facility that would be Durham Fire, UNH Police Department, and McGregor. And there appears to be enough physical space there to do a project that would accommodate all three departments. So, we now need to talk through some of the details between Durham and UNH on what the particulars of that arrangement would look like, because it would be a long-term either land lease or acquisition by Durham of that parcel. We have to figure that out. And then, once we have, we'll need to initiate some conversations with McGregor to talk about how much it would cost and if they can absorb what the cost might be. But we really haven't had those conversations yet. What our architectural firm did do is, they met with McGregor a year ago to talk about McGregor's space needs, and that's how we determined there'd be enough room for all three departments. But we just have not, we've not really talked cost. For Durham, I think the price tag would be for the fire department only somewhere in the, I'd say, six to ten million dollar range for a new facility, but that excluded UNH PD and excluded McGregor, so we'd have to figure all of that out.
Is there any timeframe, or is it just something that's to some...
It's sort of a near-long-term plan. We just haven't moved beyond that. UNH is not, you know, UNH has been dealing with their own physical challenges, so they're really not quite in a position to commit to the capital cost of this effort other than preliminary design and just putting a spot on the map where this can happen over the long term. And Durham has been doing a lot of long-term capital planning, and we're, we're planning for the expense, but again, it's probably in the three-to-five-year timeframe. That's what I would...
With their current facilities, they're not, UNH is not going to say, "Go find another home."
No. So, in the UNH master plan, so the current arrangement is the physical location where Durham Fire is located and where McGregor is located are actually parcel, those are buildings leased to Durham, and then Durham subleases what's now McGregor's to McGregor. And in the UNH long-term master plan, they would like to turn College Road into pedestrian-only, a pedestrian-only way, but to do that, we first need to move the fire department elsewhere because that's where we exit. And in addition, UNH's long-term plan is to either repurpose or take down and rebuild the current General Services Building where we're located. So, the driver for a new facility is twofold. On one hand, UNH can't move forward with their plans until we find an ultimate site, and the current Durham Fire Department facility really does not meet any modern standard at all, anywhere. So, from providing our staff with a facility that really serves the needs of the town and their needs, we need to find something new. So, that's, there are two factors driving it, but it's, it's not a crisis, and we've made do in the current site, which has been a temporary location for, it's always intended to be a temporary location for decades, but that's how we, that's what we do.
Thank you for that, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
So, item four, as most of you may know, Toby Van Hagen's father passed away, so we can do some things that obviously be here tonight. However, I noticed one of the items is supposed to discuss whether to insulate the new swap shop. I also noticed that Sharon Meeker is here. I'm sure she has an opinion on that, and should we go ahead? And I know Scott had some points about it also. If we could just go ahead, maybe, and focus on that item and see what we would like to do here. Sharon?
Sharon Meeker, 203 Wosley Falls Road, Lee? Well, I guess, we had hoped, when we saw the $5,000 in our budget that you folks put in a year ago, I guess we had hoped that the new swap shop would convey some information about energy savings to the public. And we had talked about that and how we wanted it to do that, and we even had looked at several kinds of heat pumps, I don't know the right term, but for the whole facility. And then it got down to the little six-by-six or eight-by-eight part of the building where volunteers can sit and be warm because there'll be an electric heater there. And so, anyway, anyway, I thought getting rid of the electric heaters was one of the ideas about changing the swap shop. But anyway, we said, "Well, yes, that amount of space is not very great, eight by eight, but of course, people will be opening the door into the larger space, which is the space that, I think the whole thing should be insulated." And I think the smaller part where the volunteers are supposed to sit and keep warm before they go out into the cold place, you know, must be insulated because it's half the building that's there, but I don't know. But anyway, I just, I just thought, "What? We're building a new swap shop? We're not going to insulate it? It's going to be cold, as the dickens in winter, but we still want people to bring their stuff there?" Because people feel, I think, for the most part, what I've talked to people anyway, just informally, they feel good about bringing things to the swap shop and that somebody else might use it. And it's a good thing, they don't need it, so let's pass it on. And so, I'm feeling like if the, if we can't insulate the building where we're going to ask people to come into, that it's not, it seems not right to me to say. And I feel like it wouldn't be terribly expensive now to put some insulation in the part of the building that the volunteers would use, the little part, and then the large part as well. Because every time you open the doors for the volunteers to go into the colder or hotter place, there'll be a change in temperature, you'll lose energy, and it doesn't seem like we're going to build a little art, a little place where people would come in from the outer doors, that would be like a double-door situation. Doesn't, we're not asking that, even though we know people will lose them, there'll be some heat lost that way. But it really does make sense to us that the building be insulated, and so that would take a little money, it would take some wallboard or something, I don't know much about building, but something to put it off, and probably take some paint. And I don't know how much it would cost. When I talked to Toby about it, he doesn't, he's not convinced, I think, perhaps, that we need to insulate. However, it will help with heat in the winter, it will help with trying to keep the place so it's not just totally, totally hot in the summer. It makes sense to us, to us and on the committee. So, I wasn't planning to come here and request that that happened. I was just planning to come and listen to Toby and see what he had to say, beyond what he had to say to me. And so, I could be prepared with how much the insulation, insulation would cost, and I could be prepared with the other items, but I suspect that it's not very much. And when Toby said, "Well, Sharon, you know, we can put the insulation in later," mm-mm, I don't think we would ever see any insulation in there, once they get shelves up and stuff like that. So, we're still in favor of using that building as somewhat of an example of staving off too much heat, staving off too much cold with proper insulation. And so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my understanding that they're putting in propane heat, not electric heat.
Yeah, I didn't think it was electric heat.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think it's electric heat. I think it's propane, so.
Yeah, it may be. He did mention electric heat as a possibility, but he also said something about propane. This was several months ago, we talked about that.
Yeah, as far as I know, he's had the propane people come in, they've run a line, I believe, into that area, so.
Well, that's a lot better.
So, I don't, I don't think it's...
But I don't think it's going to get into the big area.
No. Well, the question I would have had for Toby is, because it's my understanding that during, when the swap shop is open, the large door is going to be open, so people can bring stuff in and out. So, if we insulate it, what are we insulating against? Because that big door is open, what are you insulating? You're not keeping the heating because the big door is letting all the heat out, so I don't know. In terms of the thing you set up in terms of the summer, possibly, but once again, the door's going to be open, so the heat's going to come in anyways, and it's not going to keep the heat out, so I don't know. So, I'm just...
Yeah, I'm not sure about the big doors. Yeah, I'm not sure about the big doors. We hear different things.
Well, that would have been my question, in terms of operationally, are people going to come in and out through the big door when it's open, when the swap shop is open? Or are they coming through another entrance? As far as I understand from conversations with Toby, the big door is going to be open when the thing's open. I don't know. Maybe that's changed, I don't know.
Well, if that's the case, then probably forget the insulation, because it won't make any difference.
Yeah, so, I don't know. I think that's a question that has to be answered by...
Yeah, I, I don't have the current information.
Yeah, we can table this until Toby gets back and settles in, and we can have a discussion about it then.
Yeah. I think there is a meeting planned about the swap shop.
It is a, I think it volunteers.
It's volunteers, just to recruit.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know that.
That's all right.
Thank you, Sharon.
While we're on the subject here, so, trying to get a sense, is anything in the, you know, the transfer station itself, is that insulated? The office itself?
The office, well, that's one of the items that we had looked at, was putting insulation in the office, in the ceiling areas especially.
Yes, he was going to bring us information, that's an A.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Because I think that's, that's part of it, but also those hydraulic tanks that are outside.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because they have to be heated up so they can be used, but every time you heat them up, there's no insulation, so you're heating on the outside air, so, you know, that's my opinion, so...
I think we should wait on that, obviously. Yeah, see what he has to say.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item five. Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
So, the board had, the board had asked me to maybe look into what had been done with the Solid Waste Committee in the past, and other than what's contained in the town reports, I could not find any files on the Solid Waste Committee in Town Hall. What I did learn was that it was, a dump committee was created in 1970, because that was the time when regulations were starting to come into place. By 1975, you couldn't have open burn anymore, and actually, by 1975, they changed the name to the Solid Waste Disposal Committee. And it looks to me, from looking in the town reports, that that committee existed until about 2006 or 2007. So, after, you know, it looks like after the new transfer station was constructed and maybe had been operational for any while, that the committee disbanded. But I know that the board, this board, has talked about bringing that back, in particular in light of the issues going on with recycling nationwide, and what we might do about that.
And also to look at the fees for disposal of items?
Yep.
What is reasonable?
Yeah, and not only that, but I had been talking to Toby and have some information that we may be able to present from the attorney. I guess we could call it illegal dumping, that even though the transfer station is open and staffed, there's a lot of, what's called dark spots.
Drop and go.
Yeah, drop and go, and so, working with the attorney to figure out, you know, what can we do about that, you know, fines and so and so forth. So, I'm also going to be bringing that information forward in the near future as well.
One of the things I'd like to, and I don't know if the chief can, can he investigate some of these, I don't know when the last one was, but there's a trade-off between, because we charge to bring in certain items, and I don't know if it's for sure, this is just me, in terms of, are people doing these illegal dark areas because they don't want to pay that fee? Is that why they're doing this? Or they're just too lazy to bring it to the transfer station? And also, there's a cost benefit, in terms of, you know, we get a certain amount of money for those, of those particular items, because we have to pay to remove them, but that whole monitoring, selling tickets, I'd like to have somebody take a look at it and say, "Does this make sense? Does this make sense to keep charging $5 for TVs or whatever it happens to be, versus just having everybody bring their stuff in and we'll just take care of it?" And I know other towns charge, they keep raising the prices all the time. At some point, people are going to say, "Well, I'm going to pay $50 to get rid of my old TV, and I'm just going to do something with it," you know, so, like, one of those dark areas, so... And I don't know if the chief would like to comment, if he has any information. If he doesn't, that's fine, but I don't know if you've had any investigations lately in terms of those dark areas and people dumping things off.
Yeah, we had one instance where a gentleman came in with some air conditioners, was told a couple of times that, you know, you have to pay for it, and then went, drove around back and dumped them anyway and left. Typically, this time of year, when the college students are moving out, we get sofas and things along the side of Gary Road, Packers Falls Road, Thompson Mill Road, things like that. That, to me, is just laziness. You know, it's a Monday, transfer station's closed, so, well, I'm not going to wait till tomorrow and dump it here. That hasn't been as bad the past few years, but I could see, you know, it increasing if people, "Oh, jeez, I'm not paying that much money, I'm just going to, when I just dump it off the side of the road."
Well, there's charge for, like, if you've got old tires at your house. You know, if I have to go to the transfer station, pay $5, $10 to drop it off, versus, "Oh, well, let's do a night, midnight drop-off at the side of the road," you know? And I know tires have serial numbers, but I don't know if you're going to go to the trouble of saying, "Okay, well, the serial number exists, who sold it? I don't think they're doing..."
Right, all that does is just get you back to the manufacturer, what lot number.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I mean, the tires that we have, the inmates clean up all back of Evergreen Terrace.
So...
Loads and loads.
Not having fees is not going to stop the people that are lazy, but, so... And then we get the, well, at least, excuse me, I get the arguments from people that, "I'm already paying my taxes for you to take care of our refuse. Now you want to charge me even more money to do this?" And we all know, there's one gentleman that, that's his issue, but there's other people that have said that too, so, you know, and I'm not saying there's tons of people, but, you know, that's...
A lot of towns around us have that date every year, where if you have a bulky item out to the side of the road, we'll come pick it up. You know, I don't know if that is the answer, to help out, or, I don't know, but I do...
Yeah, I think some towns have also gotten away from doing that, just because of the expense.
I don't know.
Don't, doesn't...
But I'd like to have somebody that's knowledgeable about those kind of things, or interested in those kind of things, to take a look at all those issues. And I think if we have a solid, had a solid waste committee, that's something we'd ask them to do, give them a charge, and say, "Wait, can you look at these particular things? Get back to us, and what do you recommend?" Do you need more?
So, do we just want to start advertising the fact that we're looking for people who are interested? Do you want to...
I think that would be a good idea. There's no doubt that we're facing at some point a problem that's, that we're going to have to resolve. It would be good, I think, if we put together a small committee to start looking and see what's, what other towns are experiencing and ideas they may have.
Did you have any thoughts as to how many people you might want to have on this?
Probably five.
Five?
Yeah, five.
Especially when you get a vote like that and get the upper.
Yeah.
The other thing I'd like to ask the Town Administrator, to try to develop a, you know, a purpose and maybe a charge. Hope you're trying to, kind of getting a feeling what the select board is talking about, obviously looking about recycling in future, what we've got to do about it, and how do we deal with these issues that we just brought to the floor. So, a purpose may be, and then a simple charge, I just...
Well, I think it's fair to say that the assumptions that were used when the recycling center was developed and built, versus what the assumptions are now, have changed dramatically.
Exactly, that's what I'm looking for.
We need to understand how we react to that.
I remember about when Frank Reithold was Chairman of the Board, he was looking at a paper bag, you know, throwaway, plastic bag things, and we decided not to move on that, because of the same issue you brought up. I mean, how much do you, not only bulky waste, but now you're charging for a bag of garbage being tossed away, so...
Well, other towns do it.
Yes, they do.
Well, that just means non-residents have to go to a local establishment to buy the bags, to stick in their refuse, so...
I think it'd be good if we formed a committee of knowledgeable people to take a look at it anyways.
Knowledgeable and interested in that particular.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll work on that. Next item is the records retention policy. Since that committee last met and developed the policy, there've been a number of changes, legislative changes to the record retention laws, so we felt it was a good time to make the changes to the policy and bring it forward to the board. I know that the police department, I think, is anxious to cycle out some records that they no longer have to keep, and we're still looking into that and planning on doing that at Town Hall as well. The Heritage Commission, or the representative from the Heritage Commission, did agree that they were going to put a timeframe on how much time they had to review records before we disposed of them, and also to try to narrow down what records they might be interested in, because right now is very open-ended, and that feels, to everybody on the committee, including the Heritage Commission representative, that feels unwieldy to say, "Well, we want to look at everything before we throw away." That's, that's just not practical, so...
So, all these changes are inherent in this document we have in front of us?
Correct.
Can I ask a question? Section five, the membership, we've got down here that it's the select board or the designated town clerk, tax collector, town treasurer, and then the board may expand, but obviously, we expanded to include administrative assistant, the police department, and the representatives of the Heritage Commission.
Correct.
Can we put them in there, or somehow, because that is the committee, correct, or not?
That is the committee, but that's not the statutory committee, which is why this is written this way. The statute has it being the select board or designated, the town treasurer, the assessor, and the town clerk.
Okay, well, I don't see the assessor on this list, though.
Oh, the people that are supposed to be on the committee.
Oh, it doesn't say the assessor.
Well, the select minority assessors in lean.
Yes.
So...
We have the assessors.
We have the assessors.
Oh, but the assessor, so the gentleman from MRI is on this committee?
He did attend, yes.
But he's not on the committee?
Well, as the select board designated for the assessing function, if that makes any sense.
So, there's two members from the select board, two functions. I'm just thinking, if this is the committee, the policy should reflect who is actually on the committee? So, I understand in terms of one that's statutory, but maybe one A is in blah-blah-blah date, the board included these other people, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, a future board might want to take those people off.
Yep.
Yeah, so he can say...
So, maybe one stays what the statutory is supposed to be, but then one A in, 2018, the board included members from the Heritage Commission and the police department administrative assistant.
Okay.
To reflect, they're actually on the committee, so let's have the policy reflect what's actually going on.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
All right, I'll read that change and bring it forward for the board's signature at the next meeting. Next item, Town Center Project RFP. What we have in front of you is the document that the Town Center Vision Committee prepared, along with some input that I had.
And they have the two tweaks, right? From Deb Ashanda?
That's not reflected in this document, but I did make those corrections to the document.
Okay.
That will need a final document that goes out.
Okay.
I also worked with John Tappin on the schedule, and so the dates that I plugged in are what he identified as expected, which is the middle group of dates on the attachment. No?
So, you're looking for approval tonight?
Correct. Approval, so that we can get it out for...
We can move forward.
And move forward. Doesn't sound like there's any questions or issues.
No, I have no questions, I've seen it more than enough.
Pretty straightforward, yeah, not many issues. I've looked at this already.
As long as they include those two changes that Deb Ashanda and John Tappin spoke to you about, I'm comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable with the expected, I'd rather do the optimistic, but, you know, we'll do what we can do when we can do it, so...
Pessimistic.
I don't like the pessimistic.
You don't like the pessimistic at all?
I don't like that at all, so...
Well, that's all right.
And can I ask one question? And just vaguely remember, there is a place that you can post things like this, that contractors and things like that will see this?
Yeah, there's a, there's a few, there's the Dodge reports, construction summary.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah, so we send it out to them.
Okay.
As well as a list of architects and engineers that we already have, and if anybody knows of anybody that you want, it's sent to directly.
So, if we have, like, there's one company north something, they're a conqueror, if there's some particular company that we'd like at least to see it, what's the procedure for that? Should, can we, like, send you their contact stuff?
Yeah, just...
Because part of this is, you're the conduit, so I don't want to be calling them and saying, "Oh, we got this thing..."
No, just let me know. I mean, I send it out, this is what we do in general with bids now, when RFPs, we send it out as an email blast.
Okay. All right.
Terrific, thank you. I'm sure the TCDC thanks you.
Do we need a motion, or, no?
I'd be happy if you'd want to.
I moved to approve the RFP as presented with those two changes that Deb Ashanda and John Tappin already spoke to you about, so...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We have a discussion, I'll let it go this time.
We had enough discussion. We said we don't want to discuss it. We gave her the discussion, nobody wanted to discuss it. No, it looks great, it's wonderful. Nine pages in 35 seconds, not bad.
We're on a roll there.
And I just wanted to mention that the racetrack let the police chief know that on May 25th, they're going to be doing a test-in-tune from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. That is a date that was already on the approved license, but it was to be determined, so it's going to be a test-in tune. And that's it.
I've lost my, I've lost my agenda.
You've lost your way.
There's a little box. There's a little box?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, great idea. Okay, so we're at number six. Motion to accept the consent, the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Any discussion?
Jim seconded.
Jim, any discussion?
Well, we want discussion.
Always ask for discussion.
Fine, do you want to discuss it?
No, I'm, no, I'm fine.
Motion passes.
No, we have voted yes.
Yes, we have.
It's Carrie's Rules of Order.
That's right. He hasn't even had his candies yet, either.
I'm going to take them back.
Very charming.
I think you can take that as an affirmative, because I voted yes, and I think John would be yes.
I voted yes, yeah.
So, there you go.
He did, you both voted yes. Stop.
There's a lot of sign.
This camp that was removed, so what is this for?
Abatement.
Ferndale Acres campground.
So, the assessor is recommending that we approve the abatement? Grant the abatement?
That means the little stick you should be on the other side.
Aye. There is a check.
Yes, there is.
Because the sticky's on the other side.
No harassing move tonight, huh?
Set this one down last.
It's unofficial till you sign it.
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 Yeah, you're gonna make it legal.
Let's do it now.
Get done.
How come on some of these forms, I'm number two and some I'm number three?
There is a reason.
Is there method to the madness, or?
There is.
There is no method to the madness.
Well, some forums, rather than rearrange three names, we just rearrange two names, depending on when the forum was last done.
Do you have a preference?
Do you have an issue with this?
Yes.
Take it up with the tree.
I want seniority to be, you know, reflected.
Oh, man. Oh, you want it to be done by senior? Do you mean by residential senioring?
Well, people in South, you know, security area.
In which case? In which case, obviously, I'm the low man on the forum.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I'm self-pleading.
Yeah, I'll be part capable of it.
You need to sign that.
Don't put that in the minutes.
Yeah, we do.
What is that? What does that have, Tom? Is that your turn?
That's on the plastic.
That's on the plastic. That's your signature.
You should probably get rid of the plastic, so...
Inside the plastic.
This is gonna take that down.
Sorry, the plastic.
I'm gonna send them down one of...
I've got stuff to hold here.
What is this? All these trust fund ones?
Yeah.
Why don't we just give them to John now, so he can just do his thing?
Ben Jean needs the sign.
Oh, shoot.
And then you can... Say, I don't think you're ready to do that. You look surprised.
Surprise, surprise.
Doesn't make any sense.
What happened to the paper reduction initiative?
That's a good question.
Well, I'm sure there's a...
It's a nice thick one, I think.
Might be a way to do it all electronically, electronic signatures. Yeah.
Oh, jeez, that's not very much money there. Thank you.
That's it? John, Scott, anything? Miscellaneous unfinished?
TCVC is meeting every other week, and for our next meeting, we're having the Holy Historical Society and the... I think that's it. I don't think, I don't know if the library will come back. We've asked the library for programmatic specifications for the 6,500 square feet in their proposed building, so they told us they already had that, so we'll see if they have it or not. If not, they need to develop it. But we're having the Historical Society come in and talk to us about their space needs and requirements and prioritization of those particular needs. So I know they're working on that. They've got a couple of scenarios that they were gonna present, so they'll present that to the TCVC. So that's part of our getting ready for the design forum when they come in, so we'll have some information in addition to what's on the website, and also in terms of priorities we have in terms of things we want them to accomplish. So that's good. I don't know, do we have any updates in terms of from the surveyor? Do we know when he or she or they are starting?
He was going to do the fieldwork in May, and I think he said he expected to be finished by the end of June.
Okay. And at that point, we can transfer the legal description to the attorney to do the...
To the purchase and sale.
Okay. So I think as soon as we can get that accomplished, the better, so that the church has enough time to do their thing. Because as far as I know, they're, they're a little bit nebulous in terms of how long that's gonna take. They know it's gonna take a while, but as much time as we can give them, that will be beneficial, so...
So they have to go beyond the church itself for approval, or?
Yeah, it's my understanding that they have to get approval from the state congressional entity. It's their parent, if you will. And as far as I could tell, it's not like if they will do it, it's when they will do it. The impression I get from the church people is it's something they have to go through, but I don't think they're gonna say, "No, you can't sell that part of the land." So, but, you know, anything can happen, but that's not the impression I'm getting. But it's gonna take a while for them to get that signed off, so...
Okay. John?
Well, the planning board, Hutton Farm came in about the agricultural tourism, doing a sidewalk on that. We have a problem with that. We never really put into our regulations, so people who do agricultural tourism has to come back for sidewalk, they get formal approval. Doesn't look like it's be much of an issue, but he's the first one to go through it.
And who was that?
The Hutton Farm, Coppellville Farm.
Oh, yeah.
And I guess the Peters wanna do a farm stand, I think, is it Old Mill Road?
Old Mill Road, correct.
Yeah, sell vegetables and things like that.
Coppell's issue this year was basically the corn mets, right? That gave some, gave some problems, I guess.
Sunflower festival. Sunflower festival.
Sunflower festival.
Because the issue is that they're parking cars in the road.
Right.
Now they've got a new way to handle it. They'll go in one way, go out the other way by the bank's property.
In a police detail.
In a police detail.
Yeah.
I think John's pretty good. He's ready to...
Very good.
He's running the Coppell situation.
So who else has to come for the group, is it?
The DeBarrett Hill Farm people for the Potteville.
Okay. And Flag Hill, do they have to come in front of you or no?
No, because they had a release allowed.
They got a permission a long time ago.
Okay. Anything new with the Better Gardens issue?
It's gone before the zoning board.
Oh, okay.
Has it gone before the zoning board? Oh, it has not gone before the zoning board.
So everything stalled at this point until, ever here. That's it for me?
Okay. And you're all set for next Monday?
We are set for next Monday. I know exactly what I'm gonna say and how long it's gonna take to say it. I'm glad you part of us. Can someone tell me, do we use, do we have a microphone and speaker to use, or do I have to hold a bullhorn up to my lips?
They bring one.
They bring one.
Okay, that's very good.
Everything is prepared.
Because I'm gonna do some poetry, and I wanna be free. I wanna be free to express myself, you know what I mean?
All right.
And you can't do that if you're holding a bullhorn.
No, there's a podium there that's...
Especially if it rains, you don't wanna be, you know...
Well, if it rains, it's downstairs.
That's right, it's downstairs, firehouse.
Yeah. So just make sure that you leave that with Mr. Hardy. You don't get the microphone grabbed away from you because you're taking too much time.
Oh, because he doesn't like my calling, you mean?
Or he doesn't like how long it's taking.
Oh, okay.
Just a thought, just a thought.
I'll clear that with him.
Yes, let's have a short conversation, so...
Fair enough. I'll be happy to do that.
So I'll be there, keeping track of you as well.
We'll watch you.
Oh, I'm looking forward to that.
Well, yeah.
All right. Can I, is there something you would like to say?
You were kind enough to email me about...
So you are, you are Susan Rayon.
Thank you for letting me know.
You're very welcome.
What was going on?
Thank you for coming, I wish you... But you know, we never got to that. I thought the issue would be discussed, but it was not discussed. Here.
I think it was discussed in the parking lot outside.
Huh? Well, that could be, that'd be great.
I wonder why.
You're the, oh, yeah, well, we should talk about that, the meeting that you and I attended.
Yes.
Which I think that's why you're here.
That was... No, I actually was here, um...
I'll tell you what.
You were kind enough to email.
Why don't you come on up?
Oh, okay, sure. I mean, I don't wanna disclude anybody that wants to converse about it.
Susan sent out an email relative to the ORYA kerfuffle, and said that she was willing to discuss it publicly, something weird to that effect, am I right?
Yeah, I think, I think it, I don't think it should have been such a public matter, but then when folks were interweaving stories of what may have happened or didn't happen or did happen, and then town governments got involved, that's when I kinda felt like there really needed to be a little bit more open forum, because previously, I wouldn't have thought that that would have been the place for that. But it seemed like once it started hitting media outlets, that I think we went down a path that you can't backpedal on. And pitting citizen against citizen is never a good thing for town governments to do. So I was happy to see your approach. And if you so wanna comment on something, I think knowing facts is really important. It's impossible to do when there is one side told through media that can't be then retracted ever. It just doesn't happen that way. You can't then print something in writing in a little asterisk, say, "We made a mistake." Because then it spawned so much social media that you could, I kept responding to things constantly on social media, saying, "Check your facts, check your facts." No accusing, but I do think that once you open that door, it's very hard to retrieve. So I would have rathered all governments stay out of it, but it seemed as though people wanted a platform, because it kept going. One side kept going, and then there was silence on the other side. So I don't, I'm happy that you didn't choose to do that. I was surprised that there was nobody recusing themselves in Durham, because you had councilmen that serve on a school board that know the accuser in a different way, and maybe not at all, than they know the accused. So you should publicly recuse yourself in a public meeting, instead of saying you know somebody more than the other, so they're truthful. So I don't wanna put that, I mean, I would say, I would talk about it with anybody, I'm not, it's not about who did what to who anymore. Now it's about perpetrating my belief that something happened, trying to prove it to other people. It's just, of course, that if you go down that road, there's no way to fix it. And our kids go to school for 12, 13 years together. So while the parents aren't allowed or, or made to mediate problems, they do with the high school. The kids have to come in, they have to face what they are accusing of, the accuser gets their say, and is there some kind of punishment? Sure, sure. Or if there's need, if it's deemed it's necessary. Or maybe it's an apology, but for some reason, our adults don't have to do that. So, you know, the message to me is that nobody was really seeking the truth here. Nobody was trying to understand the view of other people. And I do know a little bit more about the backstory, but it, to me, it's not even important now, because it's a foregone conclusion that happened, you know? So in any case, I volunteered a lot. You all are volunteering. I see this as a volunteer, even though you're elected. You give much more of your time than most people would give. It's not my way of volunteering, I do other things, but when you're in the schools and you see how they handle things, you see how volunteers work, for every one bad story, there's 100 more good stories. And to, to create a position that is a coach culture is very disappointing, because these people are volunteers and they're parents. And ORYA definitely has problems, but our parents in this community with youth sports are out of control, and it continues to the high school, where those aren't necessarily coaches and that are community residents. They're brutal. It's about playing time, it's about position they play, it's not necessarily even competitive. It's just about my kid. We coached, my husband coached one family of three boys. This is just an example of how crazy things can get. Oldest son, just wonderful, wonderful, all three are good kids, nice family. One son, very talented, nice kid, hard worker. The second son, hard worker, very nice kid, not as talented. The last kid, just wants to have fun. So when the first, my husband was coaching the older child, "Well, you have to try to win. You know, do whatever you have to do, try to win." The second kid came along, "Well, I just want him to stay with the group that is the better team," no matter where he was in it. And then the final one was just, just make him, just have him put on a team anywhere. So for a group like ORYA, or for you, to create laws or, or sign things, for a community, you can't go by what one parent wants and change a whole programming or change a law to affect a family that wants three different things, depending on where they are at that time. You create the law to serve the general public, and I think that continues to happen with our RED program, with our schools, a teacher's deemed not good if their son's not getting the A. But if their next kid gets an A in the class, that's the greatest teacher. So I want, I just wanna make sure you understand, it's not even, sometimes we'll say, "Oh, the parents are so competitive." It's not even about competitive anymore, it's about what's in my best interest.
Thank you.
So, you know, you're doing what you're, do what you do, but ask the questions, and ask for public discussion about it. Have a coffee. You know? Because then you'll find out bits and pieces of how people really feel. Thank you, though, and thank you for the invite.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I'm surprised they didn't talk more about it when they came here.
Well, I fully expected that they were going to broach the subject, to be honest with you, so. We had, we had received a couple of emails. Actually, we had some people that stopped in, stopped in the office to express their viewpoint about, which was not in agreement with, with terms. And Susan sent an email, and I, I expected that there was going to be more discussion on it tonight, or at least the subject would come up. But it didn't, so.
Well, the, the feedback for our meeting is, the next step is, it's my understanding that Todd's gonna have a conversation with Ben Jean to see if he's.
Well, that's what he said, yeah, right. Tomorrow, I think he said.
To move this conversation forward in terms of how do we progress. Because when Ben and his people were at the town council meeting, Durham Town Council meeting, Ben seemed to be seeking assistance, you know, with whatever, whether we need to do to, to take a look at this, so. Hopefully, that progresses, and I don't think Ben is, would be a first to that, but I think, at least for me, it's a learning process. Because when we were in a meeting, we had the person whose daughter was affected, and two, the two gentlemen who brought this issue up. So, as you know, there's always two sides to the story. So we heard, at least I heard, their particular side of it, so it, and nice to hear the other parts of the conversation. But yeah, my, my children didn't go through the sports program, but you hear stories.
Sure.
And it sounds like you've, you've got one there already, so I don't know if there's something we can do to legislate some more fairness. I don't know. But I think I would be interested to learn more about it, so.
And, and I think you just, I mean, if I may, I think you just touched on an important part. So fairness is subjective to who, who's feeling the most, the, the best treated. And again, when you're, when you're working in a program group, you have to have a program mentality. The reason why they draft is different than what people presume. The reason why they draft is so the kids age out at a certain rate. So you don't leave a team with, you know, there's twelve, all twelve-year-olds on one team, they all leave, and then the next group has to get all ten-year-olds. Now, you know, some coaches like that, because then it's people they know, they teach them, they, but you have to have a lot of patience and, you know, so it's. But they do that purposely, so what happens is the teams that are really good, one year usually fall to the bottom, and then it rotates. And it's absolutely cyclical. And if you look at the years, I have a nineteen-year-old and a fifteen-year-old. So they all went through it, and it took us a lot of years to get through it. They all cycled through. My oldest went from the bottom, and then won the next year. My son won at the beginning, lost at the end of his twelve. So that's the reason they draft. We also, I used to draft for the little kids, and people would say, "How do you draft for little kids?" Well, you want to make sure that they can make, do something to move themselves along and feel good, and, and work towards getting better. But it was also to blend moharramet and mass white kids, because inevitably, every coach would take who they know, right? Can't have that. You gotta blend them. So there's a reason for all of this. The fact that people are hard to work with, parents are hard to work with, should be no surprise to anybody. We all have them. Neighbors, friends, coworkers. The difference with this is that when you go into that, you should, what's said there, if you are so offended, that's the time to discuss it. Because you clearly, like an email, you clearly might not know everybody, and you could misintent in a message. So again, I can say, I know a coach that coaches basketball. He only picks moharramet girls. And I know a woman that's coaching at the same level, and she's like, it's like a known fact. He only takes his girl's friend, like the girls'. So should I say that that's discriminatory to mass white kids? Would I go to the newspaper? No. So I just, you know, everything is subject to who deems what fair. So I think it'd be great to have discussion. I really don't know, I know the accused. I don't know the accusers. I know one accuser. I actually asked him to coach when he first moved here.
Well, I think, I think that what they, what they, I don't know how they're gonna resolve this. My, my suggestion was gonna be that they establish a code of conduct for the parents, a code of conduct for the coaches, and a code of conduct for the children, and have them sign it at the beginning of the season.
I'd be surprised if they didn't already have that.
I think they do.
I think they do.
Not for the parents.
For all three entities, for all three.
That'd be good.
Anyway, make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All right. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.